I, Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Tob is absent. Counselor Walker is not here. Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
We'll proceed with the meeting. I just want to point out that the order of the agenda is altered tonight. Upon completion of these opening comments, I will make a motion to immediately move into executive session. We will then return to the regular session and take up action item eight A, an open meeting law complaint filed by Mr. Ahmed Espanhani, dated January twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five. We will then proceed with the agenda however, however, we will break at seven o'clock for the advertise, advertise special town council and finance committee meeting. It's a public forum on appropriations outside the annual budget. During this meeting, the public forum, there will be a special public comment period. And there'll be one other general public comment period during the regular meeting. During the executive session, counselors will be moved to a different Zoom link. And the town room will be vacated except for the town manager and clerk of the town council. Once we have adjourned the executive session, we will move immediately back to the regular session using the earlier Zoom link. Okay, so the motion is to move into to meet in executive session pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, paragraph twenty one A one, to discuss complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. The town council will return to open session following the executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Rooney. Thank you. Is there any further? That's no question. I'm going to move on. Counselor Ette at this point is not present. Lynn Griesmer is. I, Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Tob is absent. Counselor Walker is not present. Okay?
And I'm aye.
I'm.
I am also an aye.
I'm, oh, I forgot. I forgot to go back to the beginning. Thank you so much. Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Dublin-Gothier.
Aye.
Thank you. My deepest apologies. We're going to go off of this and come back on a different Zoom. Thank you. Lauren, so you'll want to disconnect from this one and then rejoin the link I sent. I'll start with Bob Hegner.
Present.
Counselor Lord. Not back yet. I'll come back for her. Pam Rooney.
Here.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
I'm here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Anna Dublin-Gothier.
Present.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Counselor Hanke.
Present.
Bob Hegner. I guess we started with Bob. So I'm still waiting for Counselor Lord. We have a quorum. So we can actually proceed. As I mentioned earlier, we are going to now move to agenda item eight A. It's an action item. It's an open meeting law complaint filed by Mr. Ahmed Espanhani, dated January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. And I would now like to call on Attorney Lauren Goldberg and Jenkins, David Jenkins, to see if they would like to proceed with the discussion. In your packet for both us and the public is the legal opinion from the town attorney on this. So Lauren. Our attorney Goldberg.
Thank you, Madam President. Attorney Jenkins actually has left the meeting, so I, you're stuck with me. I will just briefly talk about the nature of this complaint. Here, just anticipating what the questions might be. There will be a need for a vote at the end of the discussion of the open meeting law complaint, directing counsel to reply to the complainant in a manner consistent with the council's vote on this topic. So I just wanted to let you know ahead of time that we're going to be looking for a vote on that. Essentially, this complaint was filed alleging that the town council has failed to post meeting minutes in a timely manner within a thirty day period. And that, you know, that there has been numerous city council, that's his language, meeting minutes remain unposted. He doesn't specify the particular dates of the minutes that haven't been posted. He raised, he indicates he raised concerns about the delays and pointed out the potential violation of the law, but was instead referred to human resources. And then finally, he seeks as a remedy that the council post all of their outstanding meeting minutes and ensure that they're posted within their required timeframe. As a resolution, he looks for a mandatory training for personnel and a public acknowledgement of a violation. As, as you know, the council meets two times a month regularly as a council of the whole and additional subcommittees meet many additional times. The meetings are long and the council and the council staff are, and my, as far as I'm, I understand, quite aware of and seek to comply strictly with the open meeting law requirements. There has been some sets of minutes that have yet to be, to be complete, completed. And in fact, the complainant was one of several new employees that were hired to ensure that the minutes are being created in the, consistent with the standard that the town council and the council clerk have for these, for these minutes. And essentially, the, the summary of the law here is that there is nothing under state law that requires that minutes of any meetings be posted. And therefore, you know, the, the allegations in the complaint do not suggest a, a violation of the open meeting law. Moreover, the complaint is directed to the council clerk, saying that the council clerk has violated the open meeting law and the council clerk cannot violate the open meeting law. She is not subject to the open meeting law. The only thing that's required under the open meeting law is that the town council keep its minutes, that the minutes be sufficiently specific so as to allow a person who has not been at the meeting to understand what's happened at that meeting. In our view of, of the complaint and of the, of the law, it is, as I said, the, the complainant has not addressed or, or made a complaint that actually alleges any violations of the open meeting law. The council has fourteen days, fourteen business days to respond to the complaint. days, fourteen business days to respond to the complaint. And that is February eighteenth. Your job at this meeting is essentially to acknowledge the complaint, decide how, how the council wants to respond, and to determine if there's any action that needs to be taken that would, you know, remedy any alleged violation. As we indicated, we do not see that there's been any violation, and so we don't think there's anything that the council has to do in that regard. However, we do know that there are, as the council clerk has indicated, there are a few sets of minutes that do need to be finalized for the, for the town council president's review, and where the council and the town very strongly endorse and, and seek to comply fully with the requirements of the law in the interest of transparency, it would be appropriate if the council chooses to take a corrective action to address that there are a few outstanding sets of meeting minutes to be finalized. My understanding from the council clerk, and obviously she is here and can explain, is that there is a current plan to respond, I mean, to finalize all the outstanding sets of minutes and get them to the council president for approval within, I believe it's the next week, so that, or actually even in, yeah, within several days, so that the council president can approve them. And then the town will be up to date, and there will be no other action needed to be taken to be fully compliant with the open meeting law.
The, the date is March tenth. So with the following motion I'm going to make, seek a second, and if there are questions, we can ask them. We acknowledge receipt of this complaint with this motion. We've reviewed and discussed it. So the motion is to determine that the town council did not violate the open meeting law as alleged in the open meeting law complaint filed by Ahmed Espan Hani dated January twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five, and to reauthorize KP Law to work with the council president to respond to the open meeting law complaint consistent with the council's discussion on February tenth, two thousand and twenty five, that the town council did not violate the open meeting law as alleged. Additionally, in the interest of transparency, the town council's commitment to complaint, to compliance with the open meeting law, to review and approve, and any outstanding meeting minutes involuntary post them to its website as promptly as feasible. Is there a second?
Second, DeAngelis.
Thank you. Are there questions? Yes, Counselor Hanke.
It's not a question, it's a comment. I will support this motion because I do agree that on a technicality, and not necessarily a technicality, but under the language of the statute and the law, we have not violated the open meeting law, but I have been concerned. And in fact, weeks ago, I brought my concern up to the president and the manager of how wildly outstanding our minutes are, not just for the council, but for the committees. And while this vote might deal with the issue related to the town council, I would love to see a plan to get all of our committees also minutes up to date and passed. We are in one committee, I think, again, over six, seven, eight months behind. I don't know if the other committees are like that. Our rules of procedure say we will pass our minutes at the next regular meeting. We clearly have fallen outside of our rules for a long time, and I would like to hear from the president and the clerk, how the council will get back on track in getting minutes approved in, within what our goal under our rules of procedure are.
Thank you. Pam Rooney.
Thank you. I, I agree that it would be, I've, I've looked for past minutes as well, but I did want to confirm that it, it actually does not say in state law that we must post meeting minutes. I thought that was, in fact, the law.
Attorney Goldberg.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. That is correct. There is no requirement under state law that minutes be posted, and there are some citations to Attorney General decisions in the, in the memo that I made that, that clarified that. The town, just, you know, to, to explain however, the town does have a practice of doing so, and, you know, that is, that is both consistent with the intent of the open meeting law and with the town's general position with respect to transparency and availability of, of town records. So, you know, it, it is, it is a very useful practice to be in. It makes things much more easily available to the public.
Are there any other questions from counselors? Counselor Hanke, you've raised an issue. I will ask that we address that issue, but not while we're dealing with this open meeting law complaint, but later on in the meeting. Okay? Are there any other questions or comments? Then we are going to vote on the motion that's been made and seconded. I'll begin with Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Counselor, Tom is absent, Walker's absent, Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Dublin-Goth here.
Aye.
Counselor Ette, please acknowledge that you're here and also vote, please.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. And Counselor Griesmer is aye. It's unanimous with two absent. Thank you. We are now at six forty. Our public, and we want to thank Attorney Goldberg for joining us for these meetings. Thank you so much, and for your advice along the way. We actually are going to go ahead and do the announcements, since our special public forum is not posted till seven o'clock, so we'll can proceed with announcements. Would you please put the announcements up on the screen? So basically, what we can see here is our next meeting of the town council is February twenty fourth. In addition to that, the committees that have met so far are Community Resources Committee and the Finance Committee. And so their meetings, their next meeting is scheduled, and it tells you what their regular meeting schedule will be. Governance, or G O L, Governance Organization and Legislation will meet for the first time on February eighteenth at six thirty, and T S O will meet for the first time on February twentieth at ten a.m. Bob Hegner, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out also that J C P C will have its first meeting on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, at nine a.m. It's on the calendar, on the town calendar.
Thank you for adding that. And the other thing that is not on here and has not yet been scheduled, but there will be another meeting of the Budget Coordinating Group. We just have not identified a date and time. Anna, you have your hand up.
Yeah, sorry. I, I thought that G O L was starting our meetings tomorrow on the eleventh, in an off, like an off-cycle meeting to get going? Is that?
The, the, the off-cycle meeting is going to be on the eighteenth. The eleventh didn't work for a variety of reasons.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for asking. Normally, it would have been the eleventh. Okay? I also want to point out, please check the town manager, the website, if you will. Winterfest is February fifth to the twenty second, and has full of, a full set of activities, and they are posted on the website and updated regularly. We are going to move to general public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to speak was in the town room. If you've not done so yet, please sign up with Athena. And if you are Zoom, and on Zoom, and you would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time. Athena, how many people have signed up?
One.
Okay. And I see two hands raised for people on Zoom. And public comments are on matters within the jurisdiction of the town council. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinion of the town council. The First Amendment broadly protects individuals' rights to address the government, to speak and to express themselves, including their right to say hateful and offensive things. I am generally unable to shut those commenters down under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution unless their level of speech falls within an exception articulated by the courts, such as fighting words, true threats to a particular individual, harassment of a particular individual, or incitement of imminent lawless activity. If a question arises as to whether a particular speaker is engaging in unprotected speech, I must defer to the principles of freedom of speech. We'll recognize the speakers in the order in which they have signed up. We'll begin with Zoom first, and then go to the audience. Laura Strandland, Strandland, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. I will be very brief. My name is Laura Strandland. I'm the president of the Hartswell Farm Homeowners Association on Vista Terrace in South Amherst. Bob Hegner is my representative. I met with him last year regarding an issue having to do with public safety at our intersection where it beats Route one sixteen. We are going to be having some trails put in by the town. I've been working with Dave Zomack on that. I believe those trails are going to be completed sometime this spring. We will need a crosswalk in order for people to access those trails on foot, and also for us in this neighborhood to be able to cross the street to get to the, to the crosswalks on the other side of one sixteen. There aren't any crosswalks on our side of the street. We've had several near misses, near collisions at our intersection where Vista Terrace meets Route one sixteen. Bob's aware of this. I've spoken with him. I've spoken with the town. I've spoken with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. So we just want to appeal to the town to maybe look at this issue a little bit more closely. That forty-five mile an hour speed limit that, that starts just after Atkins, as you're headed up the notch, is only four tenths of a mile before it reduces back down to thirty-five. So in our opinion, and we hope that the town will take a look at this, that with the additional foot traffic that we're going to have on our street, we feel it's worthy for us to lower that speed limit down for people to safely cross the street and to possibly put in a crosswalk when the trails are put in. And that's all I wanted to say. And I would really thank you guys for all that you do for us.
Thank you for joining us, Laura. Athena? Who's next?
Vincent O'Connor.
I'm Vincent O'Connor. I live at one seventy-five Summer Street, apartment twelve. So I have heard distinctly what, from the manager and the police chief, what they are not going to do in terms of cooperating with ICE or other, or federal agents operating on behalf of ICE. What I have yet to hear distinctly and clearly, and we shouldn't be deceived by the fact that they're having terrible problems picking up very many people, we have, there are only so many criminals, immigrants, despite the president's false statements to the contrary. And what I think people would be more reassured by is what the police department will do if ICE agents come to the town and go to people's homes, make threats to break open doors, and to, or have seized individuals who are U.S. citizens and can prove themselves to be. I think it is important, especially in light of the public information that people have essentially posed as ICE agents, in one case engaging in rape, in another case tying up an entire family and stealing their belongings and their, and their monies. And I think it is important, if somebody says there's somebody here from ICE threatening to break down my door, the answer should not be, oh, we don't get involved with ICE. The answer should be, we will send us, we'll send an officer out immediately to rectify the situation, because the only instance where doors can be broken down is if there is a warrant. And usually, the local police are informed if a warrant is going to be executed. The only other things they have are detainers, which are signed by Homeland Security Regional Directors. And those things do not authorize any federal agent to break down any person's door who refuses to open the door or to speak, or to speak to them. And it should be extremely clear to the public that if such an instance takes place and people call the police, that the police will respond appropriately as though these people were burglars or kidnappers. I think it is important that people be reassured that federal agents are not immune from laws about breaking and entering or kidnapping, and that we will get an appropriate response from the police department. And that response will be positive action.
We need to.
Not inaction.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the audience. There was another hand up. I believe it was Ariel Templeton. Did you want to join us? We're bringing you in. You need to unmute.
Yes, hi, thank you. Yeah, my name is Ariel Templeton. My husband and myself have been homeowners in Amherst for the past twenty years. We teach instrumental music at the elementary and regional schools and are also the parents of a fifth and eighth grader. I'm on this meeting tonight to ask the town council to consider contributing more towards the school budget. We have truly been an ARPS family. We both work in the schools and have our children in the schools. We chose to live and work in Amherst because of the schools. But now with this projected budget deficit, we don't know if we will have jobs to return to next year, or if the programs that we run at the schools will be reduced or cut altogether. We also have concerns about whether the programs that we want our own children to experience will be cut. Will they be able to have art, theater, band, smaller class sizes, the supports outlined in their I E Ps? I have heard the sentiment of folks saying that, you know, it's not fair to taxpayers if the town increases their contribution to the schools, but I definitely beg to differ. Does the town really expect families to be drawn to Amherst or to continue investing in Amherst if the schools continue to face cuts every year? We can only ride on our reputation for so long, and after years of already sustained cuts, we're at a crossroads. Does the town expect to attract high-quality teachers and staff with annual cuts to the district and the bad press that goes along with that? Does the town expect families who have already invested in the town to stay? If the schools are underfunded and the buildings are deteriorating, then why would they? And lastly, and most importantly, pets due to this deficit would target our most high-needs and underprivileged students who can only access special programs like art, dance, theater, and music ensembles through the schools. How will they access these sorts of programs if they get cut? How is it equitable if only the privileged get access to these opportunities? Is that really what we want for our diverse community in Amherst? Please give our current ARPS families a reason to continue to choose Amherst and for our future residents to choose Amherst. And please consider funding our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Ariel. That concludes public comment. Let me just mention, there are no hearings today. I'm going to move to the consent agenda. And the following items were selected because they were considered. And the following items were selected because they were considered to be routine and expect to pass with no controversy to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion later in the meeting, asked that it be removed when I list the consent agenda items. A request to remove does not require a second. The motion, the motion is as follows: to move the following items and the printed motions therunder and approve those items as a single unit. We have already decided to remove eight E, approval of request for long-term, I guess it's actually eight C, I'm sorry, approval of the request for long-term reservation of the public way Amherst Farmers Market. However, remaining on the consent agenda are 11A to E, approval of minutes. June 3, 2024, Town Council and Finance Committee Meeting, Capital Improvement Program Public Forum. June 3, 2024, regular meeting. June 17, Town Council and Finance Committee Meeting, Public Forum on the Appropriations Outside Budget Track and Field. June 17, 2024, Town Council and Finance Committee Meetings, Public Forum on an appropriation outside the pub, outside the budget, purchase of watershed land. June 17, 2024, regular meeting. Are there any requests? Seeing none, is there a second?
Second, Hegner.
Thank you. We're going to move to a vote. I'm sorry, may I?
I just have a point of clarification. With the removal of the public way request, I believe the quantum of vote is seven, not nine? Just to, for the public clarification.
Thank you, yes.
Since it says it on the motion sheet.
Okay. Okay. Counselor, I'm sorry, Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
She's absent.
I'm sorry. Counselor Walker is still absent. Patty Angelus.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer. Aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
It's unanimous with two absent. I think at this point, we're going to wait and begin the meeting at 7 o'clock, which is a special town council meeting and finance committee meeting in public forum. So you have a four-minute break. Don't go too far. Okay, we're at 7 o'clock, so we're going to get going on the public forum. So, good evening. It's February 10, 2025. This is a special town council and finance committee meeting for the purpose of conducting a public forum on appropriations outside the annual budget. I've already taken roll. I'm going to call this forum together at 7 o'clock. And let me just say that the public forum itself, oh, I'm sorry, no, before I get through that. Counselor Shane, as Chair of the Finance Committee, newly elected Chair of the Finance Committee, would you please call the Finance Committee to order?
I call the Finance Committee to order, and to the extent I can see them on the list, all members are here of the, who are on it from the council, and I don't see the two resident members.
Okay, thank you. This public forum is specifically with regard to an appropriation and transfer order FY25 05E, an appropriation and order appropriating funds for a portion of the Town of Amherst capital program, road and sidewalk repairs in the amount of $500,000. Is there anybody who wishes to speak with regard to this item? Public comment, we'll deal with later. This is an item only regarding this financial order. Vince? Please come forward. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak to this financial order? Please proceed. You know the rules.
Vincent O'Connor, 175 Summer Street, Apartment 12. Writing the last three years, financial improprieties. For the past three years, a single unelected council employee, the manager, has presented to the council on May 1 budgets that claim the anticipated municipal surplus for the fiscal year due to end on that June 30 was unknown. Five, six into any fiscal year, a competent municipal fiscal manager knows with certainty, barring a catastrophe, whether their community will finish the fiscal year with a surplus or a deficit and its appropriate signs. These budgets concealed three consecutive $5 million-plus budget surpluses and distorted the council's annual budget guidelines and budgetary discussions. In these budgets, the manager recommended destructive cuts to the Amherst and regional school operating budgets voted by elected school committees. He supported his recommendations with statements about Amherst fiscal year situations that were false and misleading. So what are the appropriate corrective actions? Certainly not what is before you tonight for this finance committee to recommend and this council to act on. I will not state the first paragraph, which is in writing, but can go to the second. Second, both school committees' operating budgets by council votes should be made whole immediately, restoring the FY24 $2,000, $200,000 elementary school cut and the multi-year $600,000 regional cuts. These monies should be included in the base upon which the coming fiscal year's school budgets are calculated. An appropriation of less than $1 million is quite modest in light of the damage inflicted on schoolchildren and employees. Please also reject the proposition that compensation, compensation paid for operating school budgets impacts be confined to school capital items, or that the paperwork necessary for the council to act must be authored by the miscreant himself. Wrongdoers must not be allowed to dictate or control the terms of their organization's required restitution.
Are there any other comments at this time? Okay. I will note that the public forum has allowed for an equal amount of time for public comment. I'm going to call on Kathy Shane to share with us what the Finance Committee's recommendation is.
Thank you, Lynn. The Finance Committee met and discussed this item, and we all agree that roads and sidewalks are a priority, not just for the council but for the residents of the town. And we positively recommended to the council that they proceed with this order, on the motion. The other, the rest of the discussion also looked at that we would rather, one way of avoiding capital appropriations outside the regular capital planning process would be for the Joint Capital Planning Committee and the town's capital plan to identify areas that are a high priority where we didn't have enough money to fund them in a particular cycle, so that we wouldn't be considering things out of cycle without having reviewed them. But that didn't affect, the majority voted in favor of recommending this appropriation and transfer order to the council.
Thank you. Based on public comment, Kathy, would you please determine if the Finance Committee needs to change their recommendation?
Of the members of the Finance Committee who are here now, the council members, would any want to change their recommendation? I should note that the vote of councillors was four to one, and both of the resident members were in favor of the motion.
Okay, seeing none, I'm assuming that the count, that the Finance Committee recommendation stands. Just to, let me note that upon adjourning the public forum, we will move immediately back to the town council meeting. Kathy, please adjourn the Finance Committee.
I adjourn the Finance Committee and note, Lynn, I want to note that Alicia Walker has joined us.
Alicia, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to move that we adjourn the public forum and seek a second.
Second.
And I'm going to move immediately to that vote. I'm going to start with Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
George Ryan. Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Patty Angelus.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer. Aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
It's unanimous with one absent. We are now back into the regular meeting of the town council. And I apologize for, Counselor Hanke, you have your hand up.
You might have been doing what I was just going to ask about reopening public comment.
I, I am doing that, thank you. It, because the agenda did say that, explained when public comment would be, I'm going to reopen public comment for people who have not already spoken. Are there any people on Zoom who would like to make public comment that have not already done so during this time? Okay? And Athena, how many people have, in the audience?
Four.
Okay. And I see two people on Zoom. Okay? We are going to allow three minutes for public comment, which is what we allowed before. We will start with, in this case, the people in the audience. Please call the first person.
Richard McLean. Please state your name and where you live before you make your comment.
Richard McLean. I live on Alpine Drive. I'd like to make a comment about the large.
Could you speak closer to the mic or bring the mic to you with it moves?
Thank you. I live on Alpine Drive and would like to make a comment about the large looming debt budget deficits at the Amherst and regional school districts. The town council appears to be ignoring its citizens' concerns on equitable funding of our schools. I have heard some town councillors say it's unfair to Amherst taxpayers for us to properly fund our students' education. But if we don't, Amherst students will suffer just the same as students from the other towns. Losing the projected dozens of teacher and parent positions will be a large and lasting blow to our children that will hurt for years. If Amherst needs to lead the other towns in addressing this budget shortfall, it should. Let us set an example and push the other towns to rise to it. We should at the very least be starting with a 4%, not 3.5% increase. I have two kids at Fort River who love the staff and educators who work there. They're part of the Comenantes and Music Programs, both of which are threatened by the budget deficits. Amherst is not alone as a town in facing school budget shortfalls this year. Large systemic solutions will be needed at the state level, but until that happens, it's up to us to respond to this emergency. Amherst children need their town council to fight for their future by properly funding schools now. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. I'd like to call Lila Mashabek from Zoom. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hello, my name is Lila Mashabek. I live in District 1, and I'm frustrated that once again, the residents of this town have to come out to ask you to support the future and current health of our schools. You know, we're in a time of great political uncertainty that's facing each of us in this moment, as we watch attacks on immigrants, people of color, the LGBTQ plus community, threats to federal programs put in place to protect our quality of life and the broad deterioration of civil rights. And it has become increasingly urgent that we build out and rely on our local support systems to ensure the safety of our communities. Our schools are a center and lifeblood of our community. They bring us together. They provide stability and vital resources that impact every person in this town. Deprioritizing them, as many in, on this council have, undermines the well-being of our families and the future stability of this town. You have the power, responsibility, and resources to safeguard this fight, this vital need. You have an engaged and informed constituency willing to provide support and free education around this issue, but it has become increasingly clear from some of your responses to our repeated pleas and from Counselor Ryan's recent statements, that many of you on this council neither understand nor takes this responsibility seriously. I urge you to fulfill your elected duty to your constituency, respond to the seriousness of the moment, and urgently meet the increasing needs of our school system now. And I'd like to also remind my fellow residents present here that we must remember councillor actions when it comes times to vote for who's capable and willing to represent us. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Athena?
Becca Watkins.
Hi, I'm Becca Watkins. I live at 129 Heatherstone. I have two kids at Fort River Schools. I wish I had as much eloquence as the previous two speakers, but I'm just asking you to consider the schools as you go through the fiscal year 2026 budget. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Ellen JG, you have your hand up. Please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Can you, excuse me, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. I'm Ellen Jedri Gadera, and I live on Bay Road in Amherst. I am a parent of two kids at Crocker Farm, and I want to urge you to please support and equate. equitably fund the Amherst Regional and Elementary Schools. Our kids need this funding more than ever. Now is not the time to save as much as we do within the surplus. I don't have anything prepared, and I don't have a lot of background in this area, but I do know we've had four to five million dollars of surplus for the past eight years, and I don't understand why that hasn't been changed so that we could fund our schools better. Even in the six years we've been here, I've seen increases in class size, decreases in the numbers of professionals and staff working with our students, like speech pathologists in particular. The teachers, the paraprofessionals, they're all asked to be doing so much more with so much less, and Amherst needs to step up. This is why we live here. We came here for the reputation of this town, for its excellence in education. That's why people come here. We lead in these areas, or we thought we did. I just really want you to take a good look at what's happening to our schools and fund them equitably and support them as much as you can, and I don't think you're doing that as a council. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Ellen.
Cora Fernandez.
Hello, I'm Cora Fernandez. I'm in 24 Aubinwood Road in Amherst. I'm the parent of two children, one in eighth grade and one in sixth grade at Fort River, and I'm here because of everything that was just said. I care about the schools. We know there is a surplus in the town, and we really want you to think that the schools are worth it, that we can't have another years of cuts of teaching positions, of staff positions. We were here last year also with a school committee, you know, defending the music program. We don't want, you know, every single year to have to come here to demand that, like, the budget takes into consideration the schools. We're not asking an expansion of programs, we're not asking for more teachers, for more programs, we're just asking for the budget that is necessary to keep what is existing in place. So I think, you know, we're not asking for that much, and our kids deserve it. And going back to the comment of like, well, it's unfair if Amherst has to step up first, I think it's unfair just to betray our children and our teachers and our community. So please consider using part of the surplus at least in covering existing deficit. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us, Cora. Jill Breivik, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Jill Breivik. I live on Market Hill Road. And I don't have anything prepared, but I'm going to try to just join the many voices here who are advocating for bringing the funding for our schools back up to the baseline that we would expect. I moved here with my husband and two kids about five years ago, primarily for the schools and the community. Our kids are fortunate to attend Fort River Elementary. Yeah, I'm here to join the many voices who are fed up with this constant need to advocate for our children. I've gotten more involved in town politics over the past year, and as I've gotten to know this slate of councillors, I've been extremely disappointed at best. It's clear that the issues in Amherst are deeply rooted, but I see no solution to these issues with a council as honestly incompetent as this one is. To even entertain the idea of cutting a large number of additional school staff positions is infuriating. Now is the time to show us that you care. I've seen zero evidence of that to date. This is serious. Please take your positions of power seriously. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Jill. Athena?
Rachel, is it Hall? Rachel Hall, thank you. Hi, everyone, I'm Rachel Hall. I also did not prepare a lot to say tonight. I think all of the parents who are here had very busy days, both working inside and outside the home, taking care of kids. I'm a parent of two children at Fort River. I moved here because, in all honesty, a colleague who I trusted bragged about the education system here. And I'm really confused after living here for three years. My kids are also in the music program at Fort River, and after COVID, it brought them so much joy, focus, purpose, skill building, and we were begging with signs for that program not to be cut. My friend Cora just said, we're not asking for an expansion at this moment, we're really just asking for the programs that you have already invested in, and some are very basic, some are enough paraprofessionals to work with a kid so that when they throw a chair across their room, that the rest of the children are safe. And that's also something I've experienced in the school system, is a lack of attention and need and certain professional positions being cut while the rest of the kids just kind of scramble and figure it out. And the kids that are developmentally okay figuring it out have done great, and the kids that are not have suffered. So really just asking you to use your position of power to equitably fund the schools and invest in our students and the teachers and the professionals that support them the same way we fund all of the other municipal services in our community. That's it. Thank you so much.
Rachel, thank you for joining us. Jennifer Curial, and apologize for mispronouncing your name. Jennifer, please go ahead.
Jennifer Curial, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I live on Woodlot Road in Amherst, and much like every other parent who has spoken today, I had an extremely busy day parenting and working and got up here by the skin of my teeth because it's that important to me to make my voice also heard about the schools in our town. A vital community needs healthy schools. We also moved to Amherst, Massachusetts on the reputation of the schools. That reputation, it does not live up to its reputation at all. The schools are in decline, they're in steady decline, year after year, there have been cuts, and we do more with less. I've seen neighbor after neighbor, friend after friend pull their child out or children out of our public schools for charter schools or private schools or even other public schools in other towns. What's going on in our country is an emergency situation. The fact that anybody would even talk about what's fair when there's a crisis and an emergency, it doesn't matter what's fair. We have to save our public education system, we have to save our schools, we have to educate the next generation of students, of children, so we're not in the situation that we're in now. It is now time to think outside the box, business as usual does not work anymore. In a town like Amherst, Massachusetts, to have to continue to plead for functional schools does not bode well for the country, it does not bode well for our future. Please change what you're doing, change how you're doing it, and prioritize our schools. They're desperately in need. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. That concludes public comment, correct, Athena? Okay, thank you. We're going to now move back to the action items. We're at Action Item B, the Appropriation and Transfer Order FY twenty five dash oh five E, an order appropriating funds for a portion of the Town of Amherst Capital Program Roads and Sidewalk Repairs. I'm going to read the motion, seek a second, and then seek questions. Having held a public forum on February ten, twenty twenty five, with a recommendation by the Finance Committee to adopt appropriation transfer order FY twenty five dash oh five E, an order appropriating funds for a portion of the Town of Amherst Capital Program Road and Sidewalk Repairs, as shown on page nine of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Second, Ette.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? We've already heard the Finance Committee recommendation. Seeing no raised hands, I'm going to move to a vote. I'm sorry, Pam Rooney.
Thanks. I wanted to remind that this originally came, this financial order originally came at the number of one million dollars for roads and schools, and there was enough consternation that, in fact, we had not done enough for the schools, that the amount was brought back to five hundred thousand. So I do support this lower amount, and I do thank the Finance Committee for having discussed it in more detail. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, we're going to start with the vote. Pam Rooney.
Yes.
George Ryan. Councillor Ryan.
Aye.
Yes. Councillor, Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Tops, absent. Councillor Walker.
Yes.
Patty Angeles.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Councillor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Councillor Hanke.
No.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
It is eleven in favor, one opposed, and one absent. We're going to move on to Bangs Community Center and going to place a motion, and then we're going to have a presentation. To refer appropriation and transfer order FY twenty five dash oh five F, an order appropriating funds for a portion of the Town of Amherst Community, Capital Bangs, Town of Amherst Capital Bangs Community Center renovation to the Finance Committee for recommendation and report to the Town Council by March twenty four, twenty twenty five. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Okay, I'm calling on Town Manager Bachman, who is accompanied tonight by several other people. Rob Moore is here, et cetera. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Lynn. So I am accompanied tonight by Rob Moore and Dave Zomack, and I'm not sure if Bob Parent is here or not. So tonight, you have before you a request for two point eight million dollars from Free Cash for renovations of Bangs Community Center. And I'd like to go through the request, and we want to talk about what the funds would be used for, but also where the money's coming from for this, because I think that's probably the most important thing for your consideration. As you recall, we had ARPA funds, which was, our Finance Director, Melissa's here as well. As you recall, our finance, we had ARPA, the town was appropriate ARPA funds, the school was appropriate S R funds, and we've been utilizing our ARPA funds for one-time expenses and certain other things that were permitted under the law. With the change of, and one of those things that you're allowed to use funds for is to, is for what is called revenue replacement. As we were allocating our ARPA funds, we had identified the improvements to the Bangs Community Center as one of the things that we could utilize, one-time things, one-time uses for ARPA to make improvements. Identifying the Bangs Community Center was something that the council had put on its twenty twenty four goals for the Town Manager, and there was also clear need with the condition of the building. So as, and we were moving forward with that, we had, and we'll go through exactly how, what steps we had taken to get to this position. In December, when we were anticipating what the new federal administration might be doing, including changing the rules that we were operating under that had been put into place by the previous federal administration, I made the decision that we should use the ARPA funds in the legally permissible way of using it for revenue replacement. This would secure those funds and not make them vulnerable to any kind of clawback activity by the federal government. That's what we did. In the meantime, we had this project that was poised to move forward, we were just a few weeks away from going out to bid. So the funds that are in that revenue replacement will ultimately fall to Free Cash on July, on June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. So, and there's a, in the memo, there's an outline of where that money would, how much money that would be and what has been saved, what has been allocated for already, and we can get more into that, but it's what to sort of framework, where that money is coming from. It's the money for this project is our ARPA funds that were set aside for the town to make improvements that were allowed under the ARPA guidelines. But for this action to put the funds in a revenue replacement, which would fall to Free Cash, we'd be moving forward with this project. So, and I think the other question that councillors may have is, well, why now? Why can't this wait? Well, we're ready to go. The request addresses a documented need. It includes several things that meet other goals for the town, such as our climate action goals, addressing the needs of the senior center. And I think that this, it is a project that if we were to delay it, prices would go up, and it would just delay everything that we were hoping to accomplish. So I think the timing is right, we think it's, we're ready to go, and we'll ask the Town Council's support to move forward. So I'm going to turn it over to, I think, Rob Moore, who's going to go through what we're talking about and why we're presenting it to you now.
Thank you, Rob Moore. We'll go to the first slide, please. So this is one of our larger buildings, over thirty thousand square feet, houses, the Musanti Health Center occupies about ten percent of the building, number of town departments, civil war tablets, meeting spaces, program spaces, and utility areas. We've recently completed a number of small renovations, including restoration of the six restrooms. There's two core restrooms on each level of the building. There are some new office spaces on the upper floor where D E I crests are currently working. We've made some site improvements with a addition of a ramp to, directly to the Musanti Health Center entrance, and some other small improvements to the senior center. Next slide, please. So this building is missing major systems. There isn't a sprinkler system, the fire alarm is quite outdated, incompatible with any replacement parts or any of the vendors that we currently use or are available. We also know that due to the work that I just described on over the last six or eight years or so, that we are up against triggers that will require code upgrades, so we are unable to perform work without addressing some of these items. These items that we're going to be talking about in more detail will prepare the building for some larger nicer projects, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. And we really are hoping to better utilize some of the spaces. As an example, we'll talk about the large activity room, and there's other spaces that also could be improved. And we are actively looking at other sources of funding to couple with this project. One example that we've identified is a decarbonization grant that could be available to help us reach our climate action goals and remove the building off of fossil fuels, and that's something that we could also, you know, possibly combine with this project or follow closely behind. Next slide, please. So we engaged an architect in the summer of twenty four, EDM Studio Architects was selected. We immediately got into design work. As Paul mentioned, we were working towards the end of the year deadline with an aggressive schedule. We immediately got into meetings with the building users and continued through weekly design meetings through the end of the year, finalizing the documents, making the decisions on what will be included in the project based on the cost estimates that we had, and really getting ready for bidding the project. This project is now ready to go to bid. Next slide, please. So a little bit about what we hired the architect to do. We wanted to conduct a space needs analysis, we wanted to understand how much space each department, each function needed, and were they appropriately placed in the building, and if we needed to look for additional spaces. We know we needed to improve the major life safety systems in the building, we know that we have poor air quality and HVAC systems. We know from a recent study done a couple of years ago that there are a lot, there's a long list of accessibility deficiencies throughout the building that needed to be addressed. Next slide, please. We also wanted to continue looking at other potential improvements to the building, including the kitchen renovation. The kitchen that exists there now is not a commercial kitchen, it doesn't have the space, doesn't have the equipment, there's no ventilation, and really is inappropriate for commercial use. We wanted to look at reconfiguring spaces and adding program space as an example, and specifically where to put the fitness room for the senior center. We know that signage is needed throughout the building, both to identify spaces and wayfinding through the building and the site. We know we'd like to upgrade lighting and controls, so we had the architect look at that piece of the building and understand what would be needed for. piece of the building and understand what would be needed for energy efficiency, updating equipment and controls, both for the systems and for programming. And, you know, when we get to it, it would be really nice to make the building look a little newer, fresher with improved finishes in various places. Next slide, please. So as we looked at all of that in detail with the team of architects and their specialists, we needed to narrow down the project to something we knew that wasn't budget, and that's what's listed here. So we went ahead and designed the sprinkler system, fire alarm upgrade, remove all the accessibility issues, and design a HVAC system that starts to take steps towards our sustainability, you know, goals, but mainly focused improving air quality and comfort throughout the building and all the spaces. Next slide, please. And then we, you know, hoping that we have competitive bidding, we wanted to look at what would be our next options to add on. So we have a list of potential ad alternates here. The first one, these are not at this point in any particular order, but the first one here is to include a new restroom near the large activity room. There is a restroom that exists, there's plumbing that exists in that area. It's relatively easy installation from that perspective, and it comes with a great benefit. It would allow us to potentially use the large activity room off hours on the weekend and close down the remainder of the building so that there didn't have to be access through the entire building just to use the large activity room for an event. Another item is moving the personal services space, the nurse's office, up onto the main floor next to a restroom. This would be over near room one oh one, an underutilized space in the building right now and can accommodate a little larger, nicer, more accessible space for the nurse and their services. We also looked at increasing some conference space and maybe some storage space on the upper floor for the departments that work up there. And then finally, we did design a space on the first floor that would reconfigure the current health offices into a fitness and conference room for the senior center. This is something that is not firmly decided to move forward, but it is designed a, possibly for a future project when other space in the building becomes available or just for future discussion as this project goes along. Next slide, please. The estimates for that base bid that I described are over two point eight million dollars. Three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of that has already been obligated in contract with the designer. Those were ARPA funds that were committed before the deadline of the end of the year, leaving a balance of two point five four million needed to satisfy the cost estimate of the base bid. And then those alternates that I described, they have a range in value totaling almost five hundred thousand dollars. As Paul mentioned, the request tonight, the request going forward now is for two point eight million dollars to fund the base bid, and if we have competitive bids, perhaps an alternate or two. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, this project is ready to bid. We can move into contracts and the start of work relatively quickly, and by summer of next year have a project that is complete and a building that is much improved with systems and ready to look at what's next. Next slide, please. And of those future projects that we've identified and worked on some conceptual layouts for and really have a good idea of what possibly could happen, include the total kitchen renovation, more improvements to the senior center, standing it, reconfiguring it. We need storage throughout all of the, all of the functions, could use storage spaces that don't exist. We know we want to work on signage and finishes, and really just continuing to look at the assessment of the space for needs of all the departments and uses. And, you know, one big piece of that would be what ultimately happens with the Civil War tablet display, and does that space become available for consideration for some other use in the future? And that would really, you know, having that decided will help us move forward with finishing up the space needs assessment for the uses that are in there now. And that is it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let me just mention, as we ask questions, this is a referral to Finance Committee. So part of the questions you may ask may be the ones that you want the Finance Committee to particularly raise and consider before they bring this back to us in late March. Kathy, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Rob, for the presentation. I have several questions. I'll start with, you listed HVAC system comfort. Are we changing over to an all-electric system or not? And is there solar on the roof planned or not? Is my first set of questions. Should I just rattle them off?
Please, go ahead.
The second is, in the last year capital plan, a year from now, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars was budgeted for Bangs windows. And I assume that was partly because the windows are not working well, not double painted. Does this two point eight million include the windows? Or are we looking for still more spending on Bangs out of our capital funds? The third is, and I'm on finance, so we can ask for the budget also. I don't see how with the alternatives you can expand a bigger room on the second floor without expanding the building. And I don't think you were talking about making building either taller, wider, or fatter is the way. And then I'd like to know how much of the space of the thirty-seven thousand square foot space is occupied by crests? How much is occupied by the Musanti Health Center, both of which were not originally thought of as being part of that building? So I'd just like to know what is, what after I subtract everything, what is left for everything else? And as I understand it, you would not be doing, redoing the kitchen. So even under the alternatives, it looked like it, but I'm not quite sure whether the kitchen would be redone. So the price tag seems fairly high, but I'll stop there with my questions.
Rob, do you want to address any of those questions at this time?
I do. We'll start with the HVAC. This project will not move us into full electrification, but it will begin to. It replaces everything as part of the distribution through the building except for the central boiler in the mechanical room. So rooftop units would be replaced to heat pump style. There's a significant amount of ductwork and other equipment throughout the building that would be installed and controls as part of this project. We are not exploring at this time solar on the roof. That was not part of the project scope so far. The next item, the windows are not part of this project. The request that was made in the capital program was to look at replacing a section of the windows, a portion of the building. There's much more that would have to be done as part of the capital plan moving forward. The alternatives, or alternates for the second floor, up and up on that level, there's a very large, wide corridor. And the idea was to expand a room that would take away a portion of the corridor and make it more usable. That was the additional square footage of the additional space being proposed. The Musanti Health Center is about thirty-eight hundred square feet, takes up about ten, a little under ten percent of the entire footprint of the building. Crest is smaller, around fifteen hundred square feet up on the second floor for the space that they're currently occupying. And you are correct, the kitchen is not included in this, although we were unfortunate in the design phase that we've completed so far to have the architect bring in a kitchen, commercial kitchen specialist. And we've worked out a conceptual layout and details that both work for, you know, fit in the space and can accommodate, be accommodated in the space with the utilities and service the needs for the senior center and other functions to utilize it as a proper commercial kitchen.
And if I may, Lynn, so Counselor Shane mentioned what was designed for. So when I started here, that, I mean, I think the recreation department was housed in the Bangs Community Center. And sometimes we had rented the space on the second floor to different nonprofit agencies. And I think it's been used for a lot of different activities at different times. So this, I think it's always fair to look at what it could be used for as well as what's being used for at this moment in time.
Thank you. Pam Rooney.
Thanks. I was trying to remember if there were funds for the Bangs Center originally, and if, where were those funds going to come from if not ARPA? Secondly, does, does any of the work within the building, within this first phase, actually make improvements to organization of space for the senior center? I know they've asked several times if they could somehow be on the same level. Does any of this work help enforce that? And then thirdly, if we do not have funding for a full-fledged commercial kitchen, which has a lot of plumbing and HVAC requirements, are there aspects of that kitchen improvement that could be implemented, if not the full, if not the full thing?
Rob, do you or any of your other colleagues want to address any of that?
I can address a couple of them. This project does not modify the senior center space or expand it. It gives us the opportunity to look at doing that. So there are a number of small things that could be done. For example, we could set up the fitness equipment in a space if we had good air quality and ventilation in those spaces. So having, having this project as we designed it, completed, will allow for us to look at those as future projects. A partial upgrade to the kitchen is certainly possible. It's, there's a lot of work needed. There isn't much of the kitchen that could be reused right now, including the size of the kitchen, cannot accommodate all of the pieces of equipment that'll be needed. But, you know, there's a significant amount of work that would have to be done, and certainly from that point, we can look at bringing in it in phases as an option to build out the kitchen. Services would be limited through that phasing effort.
Counselor Hanke. I'm sorry, yes, Pam. Funding. Go ahead, please, repeat.
The question was, were there other funds for this, for Bangs improvement before ARPA came along?
Paul?
I think there's just, the only one was the capital request for the windows. That's the only thing I, yeah, I think that's the only thing that was out there.
Are there any other questions, Pam? Okay. Counselor Hanke.
Yeah, it would be wonderful, since it sounds like there might be some schematics that include the adults, to see those schematics when it comes to finance. We're kind of operating in the dark here as to what the plans are, and I find that kind of strange. In particularly, you're talking about adults that include a, if I've understood the references to the floors correctly, which are also very confusing, since I think ground is part of one, and one is part of one, and lower might not be ground. I think I've got them correctly, but if I've understood them correctly, the bathrooms are going in the large activity room potentially. So, and the commercial kitchen would have to expand into the large activity room. And so I am really curious what kind of reduction in size the large activity room is potentially going to have with all of these, you know, improvements that are discussed in here, and how that will have effects on things like elections or just the use of what we use that room for and could then use it for, based on capacity. Other of my questions have been asked already.
Are there responses that Rob or anybody else from the team want to make?
Yeah, just briefly, the, the space that we're looking at creating the restroom off the large activity room does currently house a restroom and the nurse's station. So that would be reconfigured along with some of the storage space that exists in the large activity room to not take away a significant, any significant area in the large activity room. And, you know, again, with the kitchen, this, and when we can show you the images, you'll see that it's utilizing underutilized space in the large activity room and not taking away from the core area where the larger capacity would be. So we're not expecting any, any decrease in occupant load for that space.
If I may add, so the entire question about a kitchen is a significant conversation to be had, whether it's, whether, whether we want one, whether we can manage one, whether we want to invest in a full commercial kitchen or not. Those are all important questions for the, for us to have with the council in terms when the plan, future plans come up.
Thank you, Paul, because that was one of my very questions, was a commercial kitchen is not just a commitment to equipment. It's a commitment to who's going to manage it and who's going to make sure that it's used properly. And my own experience with commercial kitchens are at places like the Survival Center, but there's full-time staff who use it and use it a lot. So I hope that the Finance Committee, that's not part of this plan, so I don't know that it's appropriate for the discussion now. My other question, however, is does this project, would this project qualify, and I don't know that we can answer this, for the potential bill that is being reintroduced for municipal buildings? Of course, we have also suggested that we hope our fire and DPW will be in that category as well. But I would assume that some of this might position us for that as well. And I don't know that anybody can answer that. I just want to make sure we keep it in mind as we look at this. Okay. Kathy, you had your hand up again.
Yes, for the Finance Committee, I'd like to just build on what Mandy said. It would be great if we could see something about floor layout, just on dimensions. You know, I don't want to put you all the way to what we were looking at with the school, but we had floor layouts and, and then a budget that doesn't, not just the total, but the pieces. You said you already had the money, the three hundred thousand dollar plus for the designer. Did that come out of ARPA, was my other question. So it's already a piece of ARPA that's been spent. Thanks. So I just, you know, so line out in budget with the big pieces. I don't need to see the little, we don't need to see the little ones.
I guess the one question you could answer is, did this design money come out of ARPA?
Yes, it did. It's already been spent.
Okay. Pam?
Yes, could the, the request for floor plans and budget be sent to the entire council, please, not just finance? Thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments? This is a referral. It's a referral to Finance Committee with a report back in March. So with that, we're going to move to a vote. I'm going to begin with Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Goth here.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
It's unanimous with one absent. Thank you so much for the time you've spent on this and keeping in mind that down the road, maybe it will lead to something bigger. Thanks for joining us. I know this is, you know, not your regular work hours. The next item was introduced by a counselor. I'm going to read the motion, seek a second, and then call on Pam Rooney to give us a little more background. To refer the proposed amendments to the community activity form and town council policy on making recommendations for town council appointments to multiple member bodies to the governance, organization, and legislation committee with a report to the council by March twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second, Rooney.
Thank you. Pam? Thank you. Pam, you want to speak?
Thank you. Every year, the, the Community Resource Committee goes through the process of interviewing members for the Zoning Board of Appeals and for the Planning Board. So this is absolutely an annual thing. We have a conflict in the information that is given to the public in terms of encouraging public participation in our, in our boards and committees in town. So the, the very basic premise here is that the Community Activity Form website says, if you have sent in a CAF within the last three years, you do not have to send in another one. And yet, our, our, our policy, council policy for multi-member bodies says something different. So I would, I'm asking for GOL to take a close look at that. I'm, I'm hoping for some good feedback and some, and some improvement to this idea. But I would, there's a timeframe on here just to keep things going. In fact, we will be, as a, as a committee, starting the process of discussing ZBA and Planning Board interviews. And the sooner we get some feedback from the council as a whole, the better equipped we are to handle that process smoothly. So I appreciate the time and energy and look forward to some good feedback. Thank you.
Are there council questions? Counselor Hanke?
Yeah. Number one, I was dismayed that this, I'm going to be a stickler on procedure and rules today, dismayed that this was memo was addressed to GOL instead of the council. Because our rules require any measures come to the council, not to committees first. So it would be nice if individuals and counselors asked the council and waited for a referral before addressing committees. It is unclear from page one with the motion that has a recommended motion in it, particularly number two, that has a move to amend section two of the policy to change the wording to state, and then that wording includes exactly one sentence. But the discussion at the end, at the beginning of page three indicates that it would be more than that sentence. So I am hopeful that GOL can clear up whether the intent is to essentially delete all of section two, except for the sentence that's listed on page one, or whether, as it appears in the rest of the memo, the intent is to change a small section of that section two to the new wording. Because those are two very different things. I support amending the CAF. I am concerned that this change, if it leaves out other things, again, I'm not sure what it's, what section two would read in the end, because it doesn't, even page three leaves out the rest of section two, even if it has the dot, dot, dot in the beginning. So again, I don't know what the intent is to have section two read after this. So it's hard to make comments. I don't support removing other sections of this section two. The wording about those individuals who submit an SOI, no, some sort of wording that there's no requirement, it is unclear what the applicant pool would be between the bulletin board notice being sent, posted, and communications from the chair. Because the reason we had new CAFs to be submitted was to clear up who the chair needed to communicate with throughout the whole process until the interviews. And I am worried that this language unclears that up. Because the language also does not address other than having a chair reach out to a new, to and re, potentially a current board member whose term might be expiring. It does not say that that board member must submit a new CAF, but the board members, we appoint for three-year terms. Their CAF will not be within the last two years. And so do they need to submit a new one to be part of the pool? Because in theory, they do, but this doesn't clear up that they would. So I think there's a little bit of work that needs to go on in here. I'm okay with the intent, if I understand the intent correctly. I want to be clear on that. But how it's been presented and what the actual final version looks like is hard to comment on because of, in particular, that issue. And then things that are not clear as to whether other parts of section two would be deleted or intend tend to be deleted. Because I would not support deleting, the multiple member bodies are separate, the CAFs are separate from those submitted to the town manager. I would not be okay with deleting that the chairs have to confirm receipt of the CAF to the people. And I would not be okay with deleting that CAFs are personnel, personnel records and not public documents. Yet this, everything listed here seems to imply that those particular sentences would be deleted. And so I want to be clear about that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? This is a referral to GOL. We'll begin with Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Greasmer?
Aye.
Counselor Hanke?
Aye, but I believe you skipped people between Shane and DeAngelis.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. I skipped, it's on the next page. I'll come back to that. Let's continue. Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Hegner, Counselor, Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Alicia Walker?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous with one absent. The next item was pulled from consent because a counselor and alerted me in advance that they would be pulling it, so we just went ahead and pulled it. I'm going to read the motion, seek a second, and then we'll go to the discussion.
Point of order?
Yes.
To save one potential amendment before you read the motion, may I make one comment about my concern?
Yes.
There was a discrepancy between the motion and the plot, in particular with the parking spots. Can we clear up which one is accurate? Because the motion has six, five spaces on Boltwood and six on South Pleasant. And the plot that we were given has six spaces on Boltwood and five on South Pleasant.
So I think that the language got transposed. So I want to stick with the plan, since that's already done. So just, if you, if it's okay with the counselors to change those numbers to six on Boltwood and five on South Pleasant. I think that matches, I just make sure that matches. Yeah, that matches the plan.
All right. Are there any other? Okay, thank you.
That one was going to be a definite if you made the motion, and I didn't want, I wanted to save that one.
Thank you. So the motion, as it presently reads, is to approve the Amherst Farmers Market long-term event use reservation of the South Common and associated parking spaces at no charge under Town Council Policy regarding the control and regulation of public way on Saturdays from 8:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. beginning on April 19th, 2025, and ending on November 15th, 2025. And then dots, approve exclusive use of the area on the South Common as shown in the plan entitled Amherst Farmers Market Proposed Layout 2022 Season, January Set 27, 2022. Next bullet, reserve 15 spaces on Spring Street for six spaces on Boltwood Avenue and five spaces on South Pleasant Street for all vendor parking. There's an extra four. And customer pickup to be clearly marked by the Amherst Farmers Market and to further authorize the town manager to, the ability to modify the approval through November 15th, 2025 in order to schedule concurrent use of the town common for short-term event use. Is there a second?
Second, Ryan.
Okay. Counselor Hanke?
Yes, a couple of questions that hopefully can be answered tonight. Does the Farmers Market still do customer pickups? The spots on South Pleasant Street were originally in COVID for customer pickup reservation, and that language is still in here. But are they still actually doing, I don't know what the term would be, but pickups like that instead of people walking around? Such that those spots, are those spots still needed for that purpose? As it's stated in the motion. It says no cost. Do we charge other entities fees for reserving the common or parking associated with use on the common during and throughout the year? And if so, which entities do we charge and how much do we charge them? And the times that are listed here, 8:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., the memo indicated that people start unpacking somewhere around 5 a.m. I believe our parking rates start at 8 a.m. on Saturdays. So are we charging them for parking at 8 a.m. to 8:30? And if the vehicles are still there after 1:30, are parking fees still, do they go back in effect? And those are my questions.
I think I can answer most, I can answer most of them. So the, most, most of parking is utilized by the vendors. There's some, mostly in the Spring Street lot that are, that they hold back in case someone needs to drive up to pick up food for any reason. But all the ones on South Pleasant Street and on Boltwood Avenue are used by vendors. And then they, because we don't, we don't want them to be driving on the common, they park. And that's the closest to their various stands, basically. We do not charge them for this, this parking that we give them. This has come up previously, as you recall. And so this is a permission to use the space because of the greater good for the community, I think, is the logic behind that. And then for the other users, there isn't a fee to reserve the common. There is sometimes a, there might be a deposit that's needed for use of the electricity that's on the common. I think they have to get a key or something. I'm not really sure what the specifics are for that. And other than the Rotary, which uses a large portion of Boltwood Avenue for its parking, there aren't usually large requests for parking. If they are, I get, I report them to you in the, in the manager's report. I think the, but we don't charge for use of parking associated with any event on the, on the common.
Please.
Do we charge the Farmers Market for the use of electricity or the deposit to get keys for electricity, since I believe some of the vendors hook up to electricity?
No, we don't.
Why would we have different policies for them and other users of the common?
So we, we don't charge people for the use of the electricity. It's more to make sure that there's a key to unlock the cabinet, to make sure that the key comes back. We do this for different buildings that we have as well. That it's a way to get the key back once we, if it's a physical key. I'm not sure, months, and we do the same thing. It might be $20, $25, something like that.
I guess I don't understand why we don't charge the deposit for the Farmers Market for that key.
So they don't get a key, so DPW knows they're there every more, every Saturday. They would go and they open up the, because they, it's every, every Saturday.
Okay, and if it's all vendor parking?
It can be some customer parking.
No, I, I understand that. I'm concerned about these times, 8:30 to 1:30. If, if vendors are there earlier and technically parking is charged starting earlier, are the times in the motion proper times? How are those times related to when the vendors are parking there? And should the parking reservation times better match the vendor times? And should there be different times for the use of the common itself versus the parking, or do they all match the same times?
So they, it'd be better to make it longer because they, they get there as early as, he said five, I think it's more like six o'clock that they tend to get there. And that's when they start to utilize the parking spaces and the, and the common itself. So I was, we could make this from 6 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. They're usually pretty much gone by 1:30 p.m.
Okay. Counselor Hanke?
So hopefully it's a friendly amendment. I'm more concerned about the time that overlaps with the charging of parking than that. Although I guess if they're not reserved till eight or 8:30 and someone parks there at seven, you, the Farmers Market can't do anything about that until eight o'clock, right?
Right. I mean, if they, if they have a reserve starting at six, we start to try and work, work through who, who those cars belong to.
Well, but if it's not reserved till eight or 8:30, you don't work.
We can't allow that.
You can't do that until 8:30. You can't.
So we'd like to make this 6 a.m.
So 6 a.m. So a friendly amendment to 6 a.m. to 1:30 p.m.?
Fine with me. Seconder, who was the second? And fine. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Counselor Hanke, you still have your hand up. Okay. Seeing none with a friendly amendment of changing the 8:30 to six. We'll begin with Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Alicia Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Greasmer?
Aye.
Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Twelve in favor and one absent. We're going to take a break. We'll be reconvening at 8:20. Please turn off your mics and your pictures and turn them back on when you come back. Thank you. We need to reconvene, gang. We're going to start in another minute. I'm using my clock on my computer, not the town clock. Please turn your video on when you get back to your seat. Please turn on your video when you return. George. Pat. Thank you. Is this going to take?
Is your, is your microphone on?
I didn't, thank you.
Yep.
That's why you're looking at me so strangely. Good evening.
Are you putting that motion on the floor?
I am putting the following motion on the floor. To adopt the 2025 Town Manager Goals, and at this point is as presented. Is there a second?
Second, DeAngelis.
Some point of clarification.
Yes.
This is the revised version you put on the floor to adopt, right?
Yes.
That came out later today.
This is the one that was mailed out today that included splitting the two things that you called our attention to, okay? Does that make sense? Counselor Pam Rooney.
I have a question, and that is, are we automatically adopting all of the ongoing goals, action items, I should say, that were in a table at the very end of our action item list? If so, I would actually like to see them. They were not included in what we got today.
Yes, they are. They're incorporated.
All of the ongoing?
Yes, the ongoing are now incorporated. Okay. Kathy.
I think that relates to Pam's question, but Lynn, I didn't completely understand when I should do this, but I would like to change the wording of one of them.
Okay.
The one that relates to Jones, because I didn't understand it was going to become a goal, or I would have done it when we met. So you just tell me when I'm, when I make that motion, and I can explain why.
Okay, I'm asking the clerk of the council to put the goals up so that she can show your motion. And Kathy, it is now up there. So would you please?
Yes, so I, I wanted to just, the way it was originally worded.
Up, what, would you, would you seek a second? Now that there's a motion, I'm assuming you're making a motion to amend, so can we have a second?
So let's.
Yes, second. I, I am making a motion to amend this one item, and.
And would you please read your motion? I move to.
Okay, I move to add the wording, provided that the funding for the trustee's share grants and other non-taxpayer share of the Jones project is secured and the budget is no more than $46 million, comma. I move to add those words so that the goal would say, provided that the funding for the trustee's share grants and other taxpayer share of the Jones project is secured and the budget is no more than $46 million, sign a contract and break ground on the Jones Library renovation and expansion project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Kathy, please speak to your motion.
I wanted to add this wording, and I'm, I'm fairly confident the town manager would do this, but I don't think we should just say, sign the contract and break ground, because we need to make sure we're on secure grounds to be financing to keep the town taxpayer share at what we have publicly said it is multiple times. Right now, there is some question that the federal grant funds, $2 million, might be at risk. We haven't closed that door yet. We're not sure about some of the other pieces. The trustees, at one point, the former treasurer had said they could take a loan out against their endowment to move money over to us faster. So I just want to make sure before we sign a contract that we're sure about the funding sources and we're sure that the budget is still at or below the $46 million. So that's why I added those words. Then I'm okay with go ahead and sign the contract and break ground.
Are there questions or comments regarding this amendment? Pam Rooney.
Thank you. I, I would like to make sure that we have the $46 million correct. If it's 46.1, I think is the number that is in my head. I just want to make sure that we have that correct.
I actually don't know. I've always thought of it as 46, but I do want to be precise.
We're looking it up.
Whatever the original authorization was.
Pam, was there any further comment? Okay. George Ryan.
So I can support this, but I, I have a question about what secured means, and maybe Kathy can clarify that a bit. Clearly, the fundraising campaign will have all their money on hand by the time it's time to sign a contract. So we have in the past, is my understanding, been relying on the good judgment of the town manager, that he and his finance team would be satisfied, and until they're satisfied, they're not going to sign anything. And so I'm perfectly comfortable with the way things stand right here. But if you wanted to add this language, I would be willing to consider that. But I need to understand, and I imagine the town manager might like to know what you mean by secured.
Okay, Kathy.
Okay, I'll speak to that. When, when we originally discussed this, one possibility offered by the trustees is if they had not gotten all the, what they thought they could raise fundraising, that they had talked with the bank and they could get a $5 million loan against their endowment, they could move the loan over to us, you know? So at this point, the gap almost equals the endowment. They can't send the entire, so that, that would be one piece of it. So I understand they may not have every piece of their fundraising. The other piece is we've got two-point-something million dollars in federal grant as part of the financing project, and I'm hoping we reach closure on the historic review and we get a favorable reading on that. But I would like to know that that's happened before we sign a contract, because it's $2 million. If the federal government backs out on either of those grants, then there's another $2 million loss. And I'll just say, I mean, none of us can know the best, we could do as best as we can, but one of the grants, if we don't get it soon, and the fine-tooth comb that's going through every federal dime looks at the cultural grant, it might not be, you know, since we don't have the money in hand yet, it's been, it's been a band. So I would just like to be on fairly secure ground, given the crunch we've got on our operating budget and other capital. So that's why I wanted to add this wording. You know, I do think the town manager will likely do this, but on the other hand, the, the bid came in under or at the amount. I don't want to say just go plowing ahead. I want to make sure we're really cautious before we sign a contract.
Paul, did you come up with a figure? 46.1, please amend it's, and we'll accept that as a friendly amendment, I hope?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
May I follow up just briefly?
Yes, please.
So I guess my question perhaps now is directed better to Paul. Is Paul comfortable with this language? And does he feel like he understands what's being asked of him here? If the language is changed in the way that Kathy is suggesting?
So I don't, I guess I, the question I would have is secure, with the secured being, does that mean a loan has been taken out? That there is a loan authorization to take out a loan if needed? I don't, I'm not sure exactly what you mean by secured.
I, I do mean money on the table in some form, because we looked at, we had an estimate of the short-term bands and what the interest rates would be on those, and they were substantial if we had to float the money before we got it from the trustees. And that was, assuming we get the $2 million federal grant. So I want to make sure we get the federal, you know, the federal grants aren't at risk anymore. And then secured within one year, the memorandum of agreement has them giving us all the money over at a later date. But I, I really am worried about our operating budget and our capital budget if the interest cost on us turn out to be a lot more than just carrying the 15.8 million that was the taxpayer share. So to the extent you can come in with a financial accounting that says we're pretty confident that we're not putting ourselves at risk for a lot more than we originally budgeted.
I, I understand what you're saying on that. The agreement we have with the trustees is that they will give us the funds over time. I don't have the MOA in front of us, but it is a timeframe for when they would give us the funds. We're not expecting them to give the funds all at once. We know that there's going to be a borrowing involved. We know that there's money that's advanced to us by the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. So I, if you're saying we will have funds in hand, I don't think that's, I think we have the borrowing authorization to get to that, like we said, the bands. So, and what I, with the MOA does have a timeline for when they would be sending money over to us.
Okay, I'll just, I'll repeat again. At the point we voted on the 46, the treasurer told us, if they hadn't raised enough money, he could secure a $5 million loan to, to put it over. There was still an exploration on whether the federal government would speed up those grants to us, let alone fund them at all. And all of that was an assurance that I thought maybe we were on financially stable grounds. If we can't have that and we're going to start with a $7 million gap, or five or six, name the number, it, it's a cost to us, because we're going to have to pay the contractor costs. I mean, once we start this, you know, so if it's one year, I don't know how much the float is, but we had put in, the numbers that we'd been given were in the $400,000 to $700,000 range, depending on what those short-term bands were. And so it's part of the larger equation for everything else we want to do. So, yeah, some, some good numbers would be what I'd like to see.
Yeah, I, I will certainly give you good, I can certainly have, I will certainly want to have good numbers before any contracts are signed. I just don't want to be caught up on what you, what you imply, what you mean by secured versus what I consider secured. Secured, securities has a certain, I'm sure, technical definition, and so I think. And so I think.
I guess so, but if I was buying a house, the mortgage, the bank would want to know I'm secured. So I think we're buying a library building, and I would like to know we're secure on our end of what our risks are. So if there's a softer word, but we were given a lot of assurances, which won my vote a couple of years ago. So I would like some of those become money, is I guess the simplest way to talk about it.
Andy?
I mean, if she gets that much time, may I respond?
Yes.
Again, I think, as my colleagues perhaps can see, this term is not as simple as it sounds. I believe we have, we have a very prudent, financially responsible town manager. He's proven that for how many years he's been here. And we are under the clear understanding, as he is, that he will make a decision based on prudent financial judgment. I understand Kathy's concerns. I think many of them are legitimate. Paul understands them, I'm sure, very clearly as well. But there's no way we can tweak the language here, and the word secured simply will not do the job. So I would, at this point, just listening to this conversation back and forth, Kathy might have one idea of what secured means. I might have one idea, you might have one idea. I think at this point, we have to give some trust to our town manager that he will make the judgment based on not only his thoughts, but on the thoughts of his financial team.
Andy.
I think I am comfortable with the amendment. I want to make sure, and I want to get my question reflected somehow in the minutes, which is why I need to state this. I think that it's the right thing to do to, in that past, to have this amendment, because it is authorizing, in essence, the signing of a contract. And I think that the only thing that I'm concerned is if there is a change of facts that we don't anticipate, that the town manager recommends that we sign a contract under slightly different circumstances than presented, that we are not depriving of the council of considering that request at the time, if it were to be made. Again, I'm hoping that I'm only speaking in the hypothetical, and it never comes to pass. But I don't want to rob the council of the ability to make other judgments at other times if the council at that point thinks it appropriate.
Pam.
I would support this amendment. I think the word, as we've heard, everyone has a different idea, but it implies that the sources are known, the quantities are appropriate and doable. And without that, I would not want to say, please, just plain old, go ahead and sign this contract. I want caveats. And there's enough, there's enough concern about some of the funding sources that it's appropriate to add this word of caution. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm caught, speaking as a counselor, I'm caught between the fact that we have an MOU, and it seems to me that somehow or another, what we are saying here is that the town manager should sign, could go ahead and sign this as long as it is consistent with the MOU. And if we, if it's not consistent with the MOU, then that means we have to change the MOU, and I'm, that's not what the discussion is. So Paul, you have your hand up. Maybe you have some better clarity.
Yeah, I just think it's important for the council to be clear that this is a goal. There is no authorization needed. There's no authorization for you to say, can't sign a contract. That's within the purview of the town manager. This is a goal that you're asking me to meet, and I will attempt to meet it. So you, this is not a, you know, I think Counselor Steinberg said that, you know, this is an authorization. The council does not authorize the county manager to sign contracts. So, you know, I think it's important to recognize what this is, that you're saying, here's what we want you to accomplish as a goal, and if I don't accomplish, I don't accomplish it, for any of these goals that you've identified. I've been pretty clear with this project, what I would do in terms of how, the kind of this financial security we'd expect to see. But, you know, again, you have your role, and that was to provide the authorization to borrow the funds. I have my role to carry out the project.
Could I try something? If after the word secured, it said, consistent with the signed MOU.
Please use your microphone.
I'm sorry, and I interrupted also. I apologize.
The reason I'm saying that is because, let me just explain. It's because we have an MOU, and the MOU defines some timelines, and some timelines for reimbursement, and some timelines for actual borrowing, not securing the borrowing. So part of me doesn't want to pass a goal that's not consistent with documents that are in existence. That's where I'm coming from. So, anyway, Paul, you have your hand up. Kathy, now, actually, I'm going to go to Pat. She's not spoken at all.
Okay.
Damn it. Paul was quite clear about what his role is, and our role is quite clear. So I think that that answer makes me not want to support this amendment, because I feel like I have faith and trust in what I've seen in six years of his work, that he's not going to sign something that's going to put us in financial jeopardy. I think we're sticking our nose where it doesn't belong. How's that?
Okay, Kathy.
Okay, I'll make, I can hear the concerns here, but my concern is when we voted on this, which has turned, as Paul said, he gets to sign the contract, we all thought there were tax credits on the table, as did the trustees, most of the trustees. But then we found out they knew there weren't tax credits on the, on the table anymore. And one of the confidence that we were told by a very well-respected treasurer, that because there were tax credits, they could afford to give us five million dollars out of their endowment and take out a loan. We can't, we can't. The MOU says we get the endowment. That's the security here. If we take the whole endowment, we have an enormous hole in the operating budget for the library, and we were trying to avoid that. None of us want that to happen. We're already down staff in the library. We're expanding space, and you don't want to open it without enough staff to run it. So the MOU, Lynn, if you said, do I want to rewrite that MOU? You betcha. But since I, you know, at this point, because the circumstances have changed, but the MOU has a timeframe in it, and it is a pledge with the security of the endowment. And then the building that we don't own, we get some rights over it for an extended period of time, that they can't sell it. But otherwise, the time period leaves us exposed to a lot of money, particularly if the federal grants fall through. So I want this coming back to, I want, I want to send a signal out to every resident in town that we too are concerned, and we're putting faith that the town manager can think through the financial risks to this project before signing a contract.
Pat, you have to raise your hand, please. I'm going to go to Alicia Walker. She's not spoken.
Thank you, Lynn. I just wanted to say that I would support this amendment, and I think what I'm getting from what Kathy is saying and that this isn't necessarily about whether or not we trust the town manager, I think it's just about providing guidance to the town manager that represents what our expectations are and adding them to the goals. Is also just saying, like, when we are doing the town manager evaluation, this is a criteria we will use to evaluate his performance in this area. And so to me, it seems like a reasonable indication as a goal, regardless of whether or not we think he might already just do this, and he has already shown good judgment. I think that that is true. But I don't think that that prevents us from having a good reason to add this as a goal and to be clear about this is something we will be looking at when we're doing the evaluation.
Thank you. George.
We could put provisos to many of the goals in this document. We could imagine all kinds of scenarios. I think as the town managers make clear, his job is to sign a contract based on his judgment of the financial realities. So this doesn't really give him any new guidance. This doesn't really tell him anything he doesn't already know. And it doesn't really answer the question of what secured means. What he has stated, and I agree with him, is the goal is to sign a contract and break ground on the Jones Library renovation expansion project. That's the goal. And he will make a determination as to whether he thinks that goal is the appropriate one or not for us to achieve in a financial way. Putting this extra wordage in does not help him in any way, shape, or form. So if it makes you feel good, you can put it in. But in the end, he will make his call based on the financial realities and based on the advice of his financial team. You could probably add a few more things in here, too, if you wanted. What's the goal?
Okay. Unless there's any further comments that people feel absolutely necessary, we're going to bring this to a vote. The vote is to amend by adding the words, provided that the funding for the trustee's share, comma, grants, comma, and other non-taxpayer share of the Jones project is secured and the budget is no more than forty-six point one million, sign a contract and break ground on the Jones Library renovation and expansion project. Okay. Need to just find a place to record votes. We'll begin with, I don't know where I am. Andy.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
No.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Yes.
Counselor Ette.
No.
Lynn Griesmer is a no. Counselor Hanke.
No.
Bob Hegner.
Yes.
Counselor Lord. She may actually have left. Yes, she is now absent.
She's still connected.
She is?
Maybe come back.
Okay. Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
No.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Okay. Vote is six to five, with, at this point, it appears to be two counselors absent, and so therefore it passes.
Point of order? Is a counselor who is connected technically absent or abstaining? And what is the required quantum when there are, well, present?
In the past, we've counted counselors who don't respond when their cameras are off, and we can't tell if they're still present and participating. We've counted them as absent if they're not speaking their vote.
Yeah. And so therefore, the quantum is?
It would be a majority vote.
A majority vote of those people present and voting, yes. Okay.
Majority based on eleven, not twelve.
We are now going back to the original motion. Okay, the original motion is to adopt the town manager goals as amended in this case. It's been made and seconded. Counselor Hanke, you have your hand up.
I move to delete from the infrastructure management, maintenance, and land stewardship section, the action item, update the five-year capital improvement program in light of the 2024 revisions to the financing plan for major capital projects in accordance with the current budget guidelines, and to delete from the housing and economic vitality section, continue implementation of the residential rental bylaw. Continuation of the residential rental bylaw, oh, continue, continue implementation of the residential rental bylaw.
You're just deleting those. Okay. Is there a second?
Change seconds.
Okay. Counselor Hanke, please speak to your motion.
So if these are action items, and we've been told many times that we are trying to put action items in here that don't necessarily, aren't quote automatic and things like that, because, you know, just saying insure housing or effectively, I'm going to use the budget as an example. We've been told we don't need things about the budget in the action items, because they're just expected to be done. We should just expect our manager to comply with the charter, which is what the capital improvement program item is, and we should expect our manager to comply with our bylaws, which is what implementation of the residential rental bylaw, which has now been adopted, is. So I do not believe they need to be in here as action items.
Okay, is there, are there other conversations? Counselor Ryan. I'm sorry?
No.
Oh, your hand is down. I'm sorry. Are there any other counsel comments? Then we will bring this to a vote. We're going to begin with Counselor Walker.
No.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord is considered absent. Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
The vote is, let me just get it, ten in favor, one opposed, and two absent.
I think there were two noes, we were no.
There was only one no. Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? We're going back to the original motion. The original motion is to adopt the town manager goals as amended. Counselor Ryan.
Point of order, I thought that's what we were voting on.
No.
We just deleted those two.
We were voting on the two deletions. Okay, Counselor Ryan.
Under Town Council, Community, and Strategic Relationships, I was going to propose amending the first item to take out Amherst College, since that's already been accomplished. But perhaps that is what I was going to suggest. So the motion would be to delete Amherst College, since that's already been accomplished.
Is there a second? The motion dies for lack of a second.
Fine.
Okay. Counselor Hanke.
I don't have another motion, but I have a comment about the administration and leadership section.
Okay. I can understand.
It has one action item in it that relates to hiring. We have no action items there that relate to the town's financial health or frankly, that relate to supervising the current employees. And I understand that we don't necessarily, we're not looking, given the motion I just made, we're not looking for an action item of like adequately supervised. But I do think it is problematic that when we review the manager, we will have not asked him to improve his supervision in any specific way of the town's employees. Yet that is one of the primary items that his job is about, is managing the town and its staff. Yet we have no action item that is specific about how he can improve his performance in that area.
in that area. Um, we deleted all the ones that were there, um, which is why I'm not asking to bring them back in. I think it's a shame we deleted them. And I don't know what we would add, but I can't let this vote go past without making that comment that I think we are failing the manager for not having a single action item that tells him what our goal is and how he can improve his performance with relating to the management of the staff.
Thank you. Having noticed the absence in that goal as well. Um, are there any other comments? Kathy.
I, I agree. I've been, I, I don't have anything to propose because I also, the uh, Anna's attempt to make this more elegant, which it exactly is, the very long words before the actions. We have nothing about financing, operation of the town or managing the staff at all as part of our goals. We're saying we just expect him to do that. I think the problem with the managing staff well, supervising, is we do not have an easy way of evaluating an outcome on it. And we always have, we have never had an easy way of evaluating it. So that's, that's been the issue with this. You know, we uh, we don't get everybody who works in the town responding to any survey, and we don't have a really good, objective way of doing it. So I don't have a good thing to propose. Um, and the same is with finances. Um, uh, you know, we're, he, we get a balanced budget, we get everything on time. So we've always given an A-plus rating on it because we don't have another way of, of saying anything. So I'm sort of comfortable with this, but I realize that we have a hole um, because we don't have a good way of assessing it.
Okay.
Unless someone comes up with a way of assessing it.
Counselor Ryan.
So I'm not going to speak to things we haven't put in this document or didn't put in this document or deleted from this document. But I do want to acknowledge, I think that this is a step forward. Um, it's been a long and difficult process, and it's taken far more time than I think any of us would like, but I think this is a definite step forward. I think, I speaking as a member of GOL, want to express my thanks to the chair, who I think brought us a format that I think is better, um, clearer and more focused. I hope it will be an advantage to our town manager. I think we still have ways to go, but I think we have made progress. So um, I want to express thanks to her, to the committee GOL for its hard work and to all of you for your patience and for your diligence in doing this. It's just unfortunate that we're, what is today, February?
It's the tenth.
Right, we're a little, we're a little behind the game, but anyway, that's all I have to say.
Um, as a member of GOL, I'm counselor. I do want to point out that in the actual statement of the goal, uh, the objective, I believe, is the correct term. We actually raised many of those issues. And in the past, our, the last two years at least, our practice has been to evaluate based on that statement and then individually as well. So it still provides the opportunity for the feedback on issues like budget and personal.
I agree. So the statement is the important one here.
Exactly. Andy Steinberg.
Actually, I'm gonna lower my hand at the moment, but I was gonna raise exactly the point that uh, the chair just raised.
Thank you. Counselor Hanke.
So a logistical question here. The motion on the floor is, it's gonna be as amended, but to adopt the manager goals as amended. Um, the document that in theory is on the floor has no introductory statement, but all of our previous documents have had the introductory statement. Are those introductory statements part of this motion? Or do we need to make a motion to add all of that into this document?
Anna.
I think that what we were just discussing as a council was the action item and goal area and um, objectives. I, like, I wrote those titles and I keep forgetting them, so we'll change them next year. Um, but I think that some, I don't know, I guess I'm not, I'm not gonna be the one to chase this rabbit hole down to the end. I think that we could use that same uh, version as part of the goals. The only thing we would need to update, I believe there's reference to a specific number, and we would just need to update that, and I can pull it up and uh, if, if we can have at least three, three people get the same count when we count these action items, um, which we've struggled with in the past, then I can update that. But unless people have significant edits to it, I think that we could consider it as part of the package, just not what we were editing.
Thank you.
As part of this lovely process.
Uh, Counselor Hanke. Is that okay? Okay, uh, Kathy Shane.
Sorry, I was gonna say just what Anna said. I thought the introduction words were fine, other than making sure the counts are updated.
Thank you. I'm gonna move the question, since I see no more. And this is to adopt the twenty twenty-five town manager goals as amended. I'm going to begin in this case with Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Please.
Wait.
A second.
Did you have a second? I would love to second it.
The original motion was seconded.
Was seconded.
It was okay, a while ago.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord is.
Aye.
Uh, she's returned. Uh, Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
It is unanimous with one absent. Thank you. Anna, thank you.
It's been a pleasure. Can't wait till we get to the evaluation section.
You have served us well.
Thank you to GOL who has come through on so many occasions always.
We'll see you again in GOL. Okay, there's no appointments tonight. Liaison reports, there's a few because we do have some committees that have met. CRC, Pam Rooney.
I'm not prepared to do enough.
Okay, Elementary School Building Committee, Kathy.
Uh, we have a meeting this Friday, Valentine's Day, but we already got our Valentine in that the, the school construction has started. And I got an update last week, um, and I figured out a way of getting these regularly to the council because they're exciting, that the concrete contractor is onsite digging the foundation. And we can expect to see the steel structure start to go up in March.
Great. Um, Finance Committee, Kathy.
Uh, you, you have a report um, in your packet. Uh, one of it was the uh, the authorization piece we did, just did earlier today. We also got first quarter um, report, and we're supposed to get, um, we're hoping we're gonna get second quarter report at the next meeting, which will mean we're halfway through the year. And this is the quarterly financial report. So other than that, we were discussing various budget items, and you've already heard from the town manager. First, the very bad news on health insurance, and then the slightly better news on health insurance um, with uh, bringing down the rate and the cherry sheet showing us that we've not got really no, very little net gain or no net gain from the state. So we, we were just doing updates. There is an updated um, budget overall with the three and a half percent that was presented to the Budget Coordinating Group, and we'll put it in the finance package as well. So it's, it's an update on what we saw in November. But we did not yet have that document when we met as, as the Finance Committee. And I think I'll end there with my report.
Okay, GOL, um, the last, the committee last has reported, and we have, the new one has not convened yet. Jones Library, Pam.
We have not met.
Uh, TSO has not reconvened yet. Any liaison reports? Counselor Hanke.
I thought we should report on BCG.
I was, I put that down there and I said to myself, we didn't list it. Can we do it? Sure.
Um.
BCG.
So BCG met Thursday, Wednesday, Wednesday of in, prior to the four towns meeting. I guess someone else can report on four towns too. Um, but um, it was, I, I thought, personally, I thought it was a good discussion. I'm one of four counselors on BCG, so others can, can chime in. Um, the library, ev- every entity has concerns about next year's budget. It's not just the schools, it's the town, it's the library, it's everyone. That insurance number hits every every part tremendously hard. Um, and other inflationary numbers and COLAs and all, it all hits tremendously hard. Um, but I think the things that the council needs to hear that came from BCG is that a number of the school committee members, when asked if they think their bottom line budgets at the school committee would remain and be voted on close to or match what the financial guidelines say at that three and a half percent raise, the school committee members um, were very open in saying they're not sure that they'll vote a number that low, that it is likely that they will, as a committee, vote a number higher than what the financial guidelines have, both at the elementary level and the regional level. Now that is just each of the representatives' own views at this point. They haven't done hearings, they haven't done anything. But I think the council needs to start thinking about and having discussions regarding potentialities if things like that happen. Um, because that was put out there as a possibility at BCG. Um, other um, things that were mentioned were the possibility of, should we be talking overrides? And operating Prop two and a half override, which would essentially be a permanent tax increase. Um, I think that's going to be on the agenda for our next BCG meeting. There was a request to have BCG meet more frequently. Other requests to talk about at those meetings were the capital needs of the town, including the schools, um, and how that fits into budgets. Um, elementary transition and its budget implement implications. Um, and how that might implicate next year's budget, the transitions the year after. Um, and the region tw- seven, twelve possibility of consolidation and that budget implication. I'm sure others have things to add.
The one other item um, that is, has been requested that we have a discussion so that there's better understanding of, is free cash. And uh, I have sent a um, email to the town manager asking that we schedule our next BCG meeting and included a summary of those items that Counselor Hanke has just uh, mentioned, including however, the sixth grade and what's gonna happen there. Okay? Uh, and then while we're at it, four towns meeting. Uh, we did have a four towns meeting on Saturday. We had.
Madam President, I had a question about BCG, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry, please.
My hand is up. Thank you.
Please.
It's just a question for Amanda or for anyone on BCG. But um, one of the things that I'm struggling with is the sense of, uh, given what we've been hearing from the school committee while we're hearing from some members in the community, um, is what happens the next year and the year after and the year after. Um, do you think that BCG is a place where those kinds of discussions can take place? Where we can get any sense of what the bigger plan is? Because I feel right now, we're just being asked to look at this year, right, at this moment. And no one seems to be thinking about what comes the year after, the year after, the year after. So is BCG the place where that conversation and some of that information can be shared? Or does that have to take place somewhere else?
Anna.
I, I don't pretend to speak for anyone else on BCG, but I think it's a little bit of both, right? I think that BCG is one of the places where those conversations can start to happen. It's one of the places where those, those groups come together. And I think one of the, well, one of the requests I made at BCG, in addition, I was one of the people who asked for more meetings, uh, more regular meetings. One of the other requests I had were more uh, meetings where the full bodies come together um, to, to have these, some of these conversations. Uh, obviously, those get unwieldy quickly with that number of people. But I think it's very apparent that our communication and our um, conversations need to be more aligned than they have been. So this isn't fully answering your question, George, but it's a little bit of yes to BCG as well as full, full group meetings. Uh, and possibly another avenue that we haven't even imagined yet. But I'm open to suggestions.
All right, George, did you have further question about that? Counselor Hanke.
Um, to add to what Anna said, um, I think the two consolidation questions that are on potential future agendas start those conversations. But as our manager is always reminding BCG, BCG is not a decision-making body, making body. It is a body to relay information across bodies. Um, so hence one of my mentions of what a school committee member said about their potential budget vote. That relays to us so that we can start thinking about possible implications if something like that happens and maybe have conversations here in our body related to that. Um, so that maybe surprises aren't unanticipated as they were last year, if something like that were happened. So I think it's a, it's a place to start conversations and relay information. But it's more of a place probably to request that other elected bodies have those conversations, as well as we have those conversations on our side. And then relay what our conversations have been to the other bodies, and they can relay what their conversations have been to us.
Counselor Ryan.
So maybe we'll end here, but I guess my question is, do you feel that you're getting answered? I mean, I'm really asking questions. I, I, conversation's nice, but I need information, I need questions. Um, I get the feeling that, that some people are asking us to provide a bridge uh, to some future. Um, I'm open to that, but I need to know where that, I need, it's, right now it sounds like a bridge to nowhere. I'm trying to figure out, what, if that were to happen, what are we building a bridge to? So is BCG a place where you can actually get some answers to questions like that? Um, because I, I'm being asked to make decisions, and I don't really have the information I need.
Yeah, I, 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 um, I'm beginning to feel that we're wandering beyond what's posted in the agenda, so I want to be very careful.
Okay.
Okay? Yes, Counselor Hanke.
So I think this will help you. At that meeting, I mentioned asking for more information regarding the FY twenty-seven elementary school budget when the new building opens, because there's a consolidation from three schools to two. And the building committee and everything has talked about when, when we applied for the grants and all of that, that that, there would be a significant cost savings with that opening. And if the school committee is going to be asking for more money above the guidelines, we need to see what the budget after that year looks like at consolidation to see if that money is just a bridge or not, and provide us that information. So I think it is a mechanism to anticipate questions that might come up at the council and push for them being ready for those questions and to present them to us. Um, but it's not necessarily a place to get the answers to those questions.
Okay, good. Kathy.
Yeah, I, I suggest that people write these down and get them on a piece of paper because this is perfect for the May budget discussions. You know, and the sooner we have questions that we can ask in advance, the better.
The, which brings up the other issue, and that is that what is the confluence of the various groups? Four towns, BCG, finance, council, and then all the other separate bodies. And we need to sort through that. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Now, four towns. So we did have a four towns meeting. There was a quorum of the council present. Uh, no votes were taken, nor were there any votes intended to be taken, uh, because it wasn't posted to take votes. Um, the real, the uh, superintendent of schools presented basically two scenarios for budgets. Uh, however, there continues to be, I think, and others felt the same way, um, confusion as to what is considered to be the state. to what is considered to be the state formula, you will, or assessment method? The second one is what really is our alternative assessment method? And then what's really being proposed? So we've actually had some discussions about how to try to get to those answers. Again, the school committee was there, they also had a quorum, but again, no votes were taken, and there, I can only say that I think that some of the issues that have been expressed earlier by Council Ryan and Council Hanke were evident at the meeting. The other piece that I think also comes out of that four towns meeting is an answer to a question last time, last year, and that is, what happens if we don't agree to the assessment method? What, and nobody was ever able to give us the answer to that question last year. So we, it's still hanging out there. Are there any other committees to be reported on? And I'm going to ask that, that when we put the agenda together in the future, that for the next couple of weeks, we continue to include BCG and also JCPC, since JCPC will be meeting regularly. On the liaison reports, I know if Jennifer were here, she would talk about the meeting that George and I attended with her at UMass. It was with the Eisenberg School of Management, it was with the MBA program, and the council on aging has, is quote, "a client" of their intern program this year. They work with you on some basic problem that you want work with, and in this case, I think they're focused on communication. Just as an example, last year, Big Y and, oh, come on, Dean's Bean, Dean's Beans were clients, and both of them talked glowingly about what they got out of being part of this program. And so that was, and our actual official liaison to that, the council on aging is Jennifer. She cannot be with us tonight. George? Did you want to add to that?
Yeah, just that the faculty member who's the principal in these practums, and I think some others as well, were interested in potential collaboration in some future date with perhaps other parts of our town government, even including this body. So it was encouraging, it was, it was an interesting and exciting meeting, and we'll see what comes of it.
Yeah. And the way they assign students is they assign them so that some of them come from, for example, from sports management, and some come from the MBA's basic program, and some, one of the people was actually out of health. And so it was very interesting collaboration of master's level students to collaborate. So anything else on liaison reports? We've approved the minutes, town managers report. Paul?
So I apologize it got to you so late. I know you didn't have a time to read it, so if you have anything, you can wait till your next meeting, or if you have anything in between, in the meantime, please just give me a call. One thing, a few things I want to highlight, the Cup of Joe this week is going to be at West Street Coffee and Tea, which is in Pomeroy Village. It's a very, very small place, there's very limited seating, so they don't want to, you know, exceed their, their capacity. So I think it's a total of sixteen people or eighteen people, something like that. So welcome everybody who wants to come, but just be aware that it might fill up and they might not be able to admit everybody, but, and we are honored to have our tree warden at the request of the coffee shop owner. He, I said, "Who would you like to have as your department head here?" And they said, "The tree warden." And I said, "He would," and he was really excited about joining, so that'll be fun. As you mentioned, the health insurance increase was very high, twenty, nineteen point nine two percent. We had a meeting with our insurance advisory committee, just for clarity, that is a committee of all the unions and non-union representatives who we met in this room, that includes the school unions as well. They, it reached consensus on making plan design changes that would reduce the increased to, by about four point one percent reduction. They also talked about change, making some other changes between the PPO and HMO to sort of encourage people to choose the HMO, which is a better, more managed plan. So they, they all recognize that the, the challenge, they would rather pay five dollars more, ten dollars more for a co-pay versus losing an employee. So I think there's a real camaraderie amongst the employees to try and stave off any kind of reductions in force. The, in, in the, in the town manager report, it's a very long, extensive amount of information on the avian flu from our health director, so it's just, if you want to spend some time on that, it's, and it's, it's really interesting stuff, actually. And the council president mentioned Winterfest, which starts this weekend, because school vacation week is next week, it's all time to provide activities on school vacation week. And there's so much, so many things that people can do that don't cost anything with your, with their kids. It's really a great job by the recreation department. And then lastly, you saw the announcement last week that we did reach, the Amherst College has agreed to make contributions to the town and to the school district of very specific purposes, and that, I'm really pleased to have reached that. And I think the urgency of making that decision at this moment in time, because we don't know what the federal government is going to be looking at, is really important for the town so that we have secure funding. It's important for the college that they have made their commitment to the town. And so I, I want to thank the college publicly for what they've done for the town.
George? I mean, sorry, Council Ryan.
It's fine. So Paul, in my speed reading of your document, I noticed that the Wayfinders project has met a, met a bit of an obstacle in seeking funding from the state. Does staff, and maybe they haven't had a chance to go through it yet, but does staff have a feeling that this is just a bump and they should be okay? This is the project, right, for Belchertown Road and for the south, southern school, so?
Yeah, so, so they're in touch with the funding agencies at the state level, and they basically advise them that you'd, you'd be better off waiting for a year, because there's a lot of competitive proposals that they've already taken into it under advisement, so that they will probably delay this for a year, or not even a year, later this year they will reapply, or they will apply.
So it'll be a year's delay is what we're looking at?
I don't know how much of a delay, it depends when it actually gets funded.
Okay.
Okay. Any other question? Yes, Kathy?
Yeah, I, I have a few, Paul, and I'll, I'll just go through them. The first is, during the four towns, we heard that the UMass payment toward the schools, about fifteen thousand of the hundred and eighty-five thousand went to regional and the rest went to elementary. So I don't need you to answer this right now, but is there any chance we could go back to UMass and ask for a higher allocation? I live in the North Amherst world that I live in. I'm seeing quite a few what look like middle and high school age kids get off the bus in some of the new housing developments that UMass has put on their campus, and that was the original source of the estimate. So just looking at how many of UMass campus kids we've got in our school is a question. Then the second one, I don't think you can answer tonight, but we, the Amherst College news was fabulous, and there's two hundred and fifty thousand for schools. How do we go out about making a decision on what the allocation of that is, regional versus elementary? And then my last two are more looking into the budget side. The news that CREST got this large grant is terrific. I would like to know what the total cost of CREST is with salaries and benefits, and then the net cost to us when you subtract off the grant. I just would like that piece of information as soon as we can get it. And to, to get a better understanding on why they're starting up the newsletter, I think we really need to get an assessment of the program. I think they're staffed right now at four responders, plus the director and the assistant, five responders, so they, they're, they're back up? You know, I don't know, but for a while they had vacancies in the department, but I, I would just like to know more about that. And then finally, I raised this in the context of our goals, and I don't think we need a, a response soon, but I'd like, as we look at the civilian oversight board, to get some sense of staffing implications, just so that we have a better idea of not just exploring a plan on how to do it, but also what, what kind of staff. I looked at Cambridge and a couple other places, it's not zero. So I just want to get some sense of that, as we made it a goal for you for the coming year, but I'd like you to be thinking of how we can either get you information or something so we get a better idea of what, what the implications of the concept are for our budget.
So I can tick through?
Thank you.
Yeah. In reverse order, so I don't know what they're recommending in terms of the resident oversight board. We always anticipate that there would be a cost involved with that, specifically stipends and/or some additional staffing, until I, we know more, that I know they're meeting, they're, the group continues to meet like twice a month to move this forward. Once we have a clear idea of what they're looking for and what they're recommending, and that would, it will require a council appropriation, unless there's something done within our current budget, which I don't think it would be. In terms of CREST, we will, we can work on that. I mean, I think we are beginning our budget meeting tomorrow or Wednesday, so I think that will be part of our budget discussions on that as best we can. There's, the staff are really devoting their time to working on the budget, and that will be part of that budget discussion. In terms of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the schools from the Amherst College, the, the money will go to the school, and the superintendent will decide how to divide it up between the region and the, and the elementary schools, and that's the same for the UMass money. They, they decide how they would like to divide it up. The money for UMass was tagged, was, the, the amount came from a study that was done of students who were, lived, students in the public school system who are living on university property. Since that time, they have, you know, rebuilt, you know, what they now call University Village, and we have asked the university for a census of the number of elementary and high school students who live in that development. I do want to cross-check that with what we think we may have at our, with enrollment numbers with our school district as well, because we, I, I think I'm allowed to look at addresses, but I'm not sure what they'll, what they can give me in terms of that.
Thank you. Pam?
Yeah, another action item that we know is on the plate now, the DPW, and I just wonder if you could give us the status, because I think last meeting, we were talking about appointing council members, and we tabled it for some reason.
So it was tabled for a good reason, in that you did not have a, a charge in front of you, and I think counselors needed to see what the charge was to understand what kind of commitment is being requested. So that's on my plate to put a, a charge in front of you. And just for, we are also meeting with the new fire chief, who has taken a fresh look at the locations, and so we've been, we had a meeting with him on Friday, and he'll be out of town for a week, but when he returns, we'll have, continue to have that conversation to make sure that he's in alignment with whatever we bring to the council.
Okay. Anything else, Pam? Pam? Okay. Paul, I do have one question, and that is, we did get, I have to find it, hold on. Oh, are there items in the recently filed municipal empowerment act that you would like the council to specifically support?
Well, I think the number one thing is being able to meet, meet remotely, and I think everybody understands that that's, that's a time-sensitive topic, because, and I think you're aware of that as well.
We've raised that with, I'm hoping that happens a lot earlier than the whole bill.
So I'll, I'll learn more tomorrow. There's an MMA board meeting tomorrow, so I'll learn probably a little bit more about what they think. I think it's important for us to put our energy and effort behind things that are likely to move forward, not things that are not going to move forward, and they usually have a pretty good sense after talking with the legislature about what is, has some, has some possibility and just needs some more push, and I think I'll have a sense of that after tomorrow's meeting.
Okay. George? Council Ryan?
This is just an aside, I guess maybe it's, it's late, but maybe I'm the only one who feels that the ability to meet remotely for this body is something that, that often troubles me. I understand its usefulness, I under, I've taken advantage of it myself, and perhaps that's just the way the future is going to be, but I often feel that for a body like this, that being in the same space and being together physically is really important. It certainly has been a godsend for many of our boards and committees, and it's been useful to many of us when we've been traveling or whatever. So maybe in the end, my feeling is just, that's what it is. But I really would like to be in a world in which this body at least met in person. If you can't be here in person, then you can't be. But that's just my thought.
If I can, so the legislation just allows a committee, a community to choose how it wants to meet if it can meet remotely, so it doesn't require you, I think, there's different versions out there, so we just want to have the ability to meet if we, if the, if the town chooses that.
Means we don't get any snow days. I'm sorry, I had to inject that. Okay. Are there any other questions for the town manager? Okay. There's no president's report under future agenda items. Let me just mention that on the twenty-fourth, we don't know whether we will be ready to do the proposed university drive overlay, that will depend on whether we get the legal reading, and CRC has met. Percent for art for, I'm sorry, GOL, I'm sorry. And GOL is reviewed, CRC has already made the recommendation. However, we do need the planning board and, and CRC final reports. Okay. The percent for art for the elementary school, I know that Paul is convening a meeting so that they can have a conversation between the arts council and public arts council. So that's a question. Two items I do know, or that I do know is, one is a request from Council Hanke, that is a proposal for revision to the rules of procedure regarding multiple member bodies. That's based on a memo?
Not the rules of procedure, the, the same, the policy on recommending appointments to multiple men.
Thank you.
The same policy you, you proposed revisions to.
Okay. So we'll be adding that to the GOL pile. And then the other thing that came up earlier, and that is, I will work with the clerk of the town council and bring to you at our meeting on February twenty-fourth, a plan for catching up on minutes for committees. A plan for catching up for minutes for committees. Okay? Are there other requests for future agenda items? Are there other council comments? Council Hanke?
It is extremely hard to prepare for a meeting, even when I prepare day of, when the motion sheet is not ready. It is extremely hard to be ready for a meeting when you wait until you walk in the room to know what motions are planned. It would be very nice and very appreciated if our motion sheets are in the packet by Friday evening. It's been a long time since that's happened, and it just makes our job harder.
Okay. Are there any other council comments? Kathy?
Okay, just following up on that, I mean, I appreciated the presentation, the charts on bags, but the memo we had in the package had a whole bunch of questions that I sent you, Paul. So if at all possible, if we're getting a large project presented, could we get the charts the day before? Or, or even the morning before? So it would save me time when I'm reading your memo to try to figure out what's missing. I know it's not always possible, but it, it feels like they-
I know it's not always possible, but it, it feels like they were further along with bullet charts. So just getting them earlier is also helpful for me.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm making a motion to adjourn and seek a second. Shane, seconds. Begin voting on Devlin Goethe here.
Aye.
Council Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Council Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Council Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Patty Angeles?
Aye.
It's unanimous with one absent. Meeting's adjourned.